5340 199th Avenue Northwest, pin number 2433-25-34-0002. Reuse of Burns Auto Site for use auto sales and a 10 foot point two foot variance has been requested from the 100 foot buffer yard requirement. At this time, we'll turn it over to our planner and she can present what she has.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you all hear me okay? I'm gonna share my screen now and put the PowerPoint up here. Everybody can see it?
Let's see.
Yes.
Okay, item one. We're all familiar with the Burns Auto Site. I've worked hard in the last three weeks to answer the questions of the surrounding neighbors and work with staff and outside representatives to address their concerns. First and foremost, I did finally get ahold of a gal from MINDOT regarding the apron off of Highway 47. It will come in 33 feet from the center line to the end of their right of way. They can't go further because they don't have the same amount of right of way on both sides of 199th Avenue. The construction of the apron is delayed till next spring, so that gives the city time to work with MINDOT if they choose to somehow cost share or save additional linear footage. Secondly, the buyer had septic system compliance inspections done and both failed for the house in the north building. So what that means is they're not leaking, they're not...
Last we heard was that, yeah, they're not leaking. Yes.
I just wanted to let you know I'm not user three anymore. I got my computer.
Oh, perfect.
I don't have video, but I'm on the computer now though.
Yeah, we see your name, perfect. That's a little better sound too. Thank you. We still don't have Liz's voice though. We have her video screen, but that's all we have. There we go, yes.
Okay, I've had to call in. I'm obviously having trouble.
Okay.
So, we're gonna have to forego the PowerPoint, but it's exactly the same as we had, so I guess, you know, most people are fairly familiar with the site. If you want, I can email it to Shane and Shane could pull it up, but I don't know if it's that critical. What do you think?
Do you have it, Ellen? You can pull it up or no?
I don't know that it's going to be that critical to have it at this point, but we do want to know some of the answers to the questions that were asked at last meeting.
Ellen, do you want me to email it to you? Or should we just go forward without it? Ellen, can you hear?
Ellen, you're muted.
Oh, sorry. I think if you're gonna email it to anybody, you should email it to Shane, because I cannot access emails. Well, I can get my emails, but I can't get the files.
Okay.
So, the only reason I was hesitant about the visuals is because we have some new people. Ellen wasn't a part of any of the meetings before. They may appreciate, you know, being able to see. And I think Mary, I don't know if she was, she may have watched the video and Joel and Linda weren't present at the last meeting. Might be helpful.
Okay, so we'll give him a minute to pull that up.
The last we heard was that you said that the septic, both septics had failed.
Okay, both septic systems had a compliance inspection and did not meet current standards. So what that means is there are no imminent threats, meaning there's no leakage of any sewage or any surfacing of any septic water. So the buyer has six months to upgrade those systems, whether that means just a mound or tanks and a mound, whatever it might be. I know that the tanks were sized appropriately for the north building, because we found records in that regard. So it's possible that you could just do mound systems, because there wasn't enough separation on that particular system. Anyway, we will make that a condition of approval. He put the issue to temp.
Who are we hearing? Shane? Can you hear Liz or see what's going on there?
I can't. I received the PowerPoint, but...
I'm wondering if I need to make you the presenter now that you have the screen? Because Liz was the presenter.
You shouldn't need to, because she was calling in from a phone, right? She was using the dial-in number?
Right, but in order to share screens, the need to be the presenter, whoever the center has to have abilities. Let's see if I can do that. No, I guess Shane is already the presenter. So, we're good. There we go.
Are you seeing the slides?
Yes.
All right.
So, no Liz though. Maybe, I don't know. Shane, you had some input into this, did you? Or were you just here as a reference?
I'm here mostly for questions. Liz did ask me a few questions about the stormwater ponding and the ponding was designed by a professional engineering firm back in 2016 and constructed. So Liz did make a site visit recently and verify that everything appears as it should on the plans.
Okay.
I'm back now.
Are you user six?
I must be. I had to call in.
Okay.
Again. So sorry.
That's okay.
Can you Shane, or do you want me to pick up where I left off?
Go ahead and pick up where you left off.
So, oh here, now I'm on video.
Mute yourself on one. Mute yourself on one. There, now go.
I covered the septic system.
Liz, a question on... Liz, quick question on the septic system. So you said they both failed, so that means they're both gonna need to have a mound system or something, because they failed the separation? Is that right?
I know the north building failed. Right, they'll have to meet current standards.
I thought part of the plan was increasing the number of restrooms, or is that not part of the plan?
Increasing the number of what?
Were they gonna increase the number of restrooms in the one office space as well, or no?
Liz, we can barely hear you.
Okay, well, I muted myself on the video.
Try to unmute me on the video and unmute the other one. Try to unmute the video.
Okay, the video's unmuted. Okay, I just don't know how to focus on holes. Let me try to put it on holes. All right, how's that?
Good.
Okay, so some failed compliance inspections, meaning that they have six months to upgrade those. The north building was originally designed for 300 gallons a day, which is exactly what it needs now. But, so what was your question exactly?
I thought the south building was gonna have restrooms constructed and they were gonna bore underneath the water retention pond into the mound system. Did she get any of that?
Where Liz is with her audio.
Ellen, can you hear me?
Yes.
For me, Jason was rather broken up. I didn't really hear what he asked.
So I can try again, if this is better. I thought the south building, I thought they were gonna add restrooms into it and then bore underneath the retention pond into the existing septic system. Is that still part of the plan and does the system have the capacity to do that?
From my understanding, and I'm not an expert, the both septic systems failed, so they're both going to have to be brought up to current standards. I don't believe there was any plan to add more restrooms in the existing north building. The only one they had to add was something for the south building. I know that they were talking through that pond, but I don't know where they were gonna install. Is that what your question is, Jason?
One moment. If we could, I believe the applicant can verify that there is no septic attached to the south building. He was going to look into getting a bathroom and septic placed on the lot. And we were, he was supposed to have that looked into, as far as I recall from last meeting. There is nothing attached to the south building currently, just the house and the north building. But Rick could verify that for all of us.
Yes, I could do that. There's a septic tank and system for the house. There's a septic and tank for the north building, nothing for the south building. And when I was talking to the septic designer, they were thinking that would be more efficient to put one big mound in and run all three places to the one system. Each building would have its own tank, and then they'd put a pump from the tank to lift it over to the mound system. And they were talking about putting the mound would be pretty close to the backyard of It was all found out this week and Friday and today or yesterday.
Jason, does that answer your question now?
Yeah, so when the system's redesigned, it's gonna have to incorporate that south building into it.
Correct.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so sorry. Yeah, whatever Liz's opinion ends up to be, he's got six months to figure it out. So, yeah, that's just basically between the property owner and the building official to get that done. And then I was, I left off talking about lighting. I did a significant amount of research into that International Dark Sky Association and tried to figure out, you know, what their intent is, which is to preserve our dark skies. And generally, they encourage cities to adopt lighting ordinances, which we already have. And the four things that they look at in determining what makes, you know, the difference between good and bad lighting is limit the amount of light that can be used, minimizing glare, and controlling the amount of uplight, and then any off-site impacts or light trespass onto other properties. And our ordinances do address all those things. One thing our ordinance does not address is the color, color of the light. We certainly can incorporate that. We've talked, I talked in the report about 3,000 K, which is the maximum, you know, sort of impact of the lights. And then, that's the color of the light, excuse me. So the white and the blue light is bad, and some LED lights are more white or more blue, as you've probably noticed when you see some of the newer cars coming at you. But we can... specifications to, it's, did I go out again, or can you still hear me?
You're fine. You're back now.
All right. You know, a photometric plan is kind of a plan graphic of how far the lights shine away from where they're mounted and the direction they go, et cetera. So I can work with the applicant on that, no problem. The city council can have him remove that light pole that's on top of the north building if that was causing some of the trouble. It's not allowed by our ordinance, so it probably is the best thing to do. And to just put some other motion detectors or regular wall lights, as he had suggested. So regarding floor drains, I met with Anoka County Environmental Services. I met a lady that came out to the site and did an inspection. She was not alarmed by anything she saw. She said that both buildings inside were satisfactory. The parking lot was typical of other parking lots. It had some, you know, some staining of whatever it is, oil or gasoline. The applicant has agreed to not use the floor drain in the north building. He won't need it anyway as part of the office concept. And regarding pollution, the MPCA would not come out and look at the site. They were the ones that recommended I speak with Anoka County. And then she was very helpful and she looked around. I walked around with her around the stormwater pond and around the site in general. It was completely normal. She said she didn't see any concern. She would not recommend soil testing unless she had any more precise information on actual spills or something that happened. You know, it'd be sort of like a needle in a haystack. Where do you start with? Soil testing? If, and what do you test for if you don't know, you know, what was poured or spilled or anything like that? All the vegetation in the pond looks good, looks normal, there's cattails.
So Liz, you kind of broke out a little bit when you talked about the runoff pond and the size of it. So if it's sized right, why is it overflowing when it rains?
That's what it's intended to do.
It's supposed to overflow into the neighbor's property?
It didn't, well, it does overflow into the natural environment. It is strange and common too, but it's designed to collect sediment and to collect some of the volume during a rainfall and then released into the, released into the natural environment. Is that correct, Shane?
Yeah, that is correct. So our ordinances require, when developers develop a property, that they match the pre-project runoff rates with post-project runoff rates. So this project, for example, before, in the pre-project condition, ran off stormwater from the project. And so that amount is calculated in the report prepared by the applicant's engineer, and then the stormwater pond is sized appropriately to retain that same amount of water.
Liz, I muted too while Shane was talking, because there was so much over stuff. So, you need to unmute yourself. Thank you.
So, there doesn't appear to be any concerns unless we get any more details about actual spills or, you know, pollution, that there wasn't anything visually evident there. Any other thoughts about drainage? Shane, there were some comments from the neighbors last time, but it doesn't seem to be anything out of the ordinary. And what I'm referring to is the runoff that comes under 47, you know, off of the streets and 199th and 47. Some of that drains to the pond behind Burns Auto and Mr. Day's property. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, and if, I mean, if we had some specific concerns, for instance, water use in the, you know, pre-project, water didn't enter my property in this location and now it does, that is something that we could investigate. I don't know how to investigate the, some of the concerns that you shared with me, whether there were drain tiles on the property. I mean, a lot of those items, if there are drain tiles, they've likely been in existence for 50 or more years. And without having, again, without having a more specific item to investigate, it's pretty hard. Like I said, I did check the, our files in 2016. This applicant did engage a civil engineer to size the pond and submit a stormwater calculations. We reviewed those at the city level and approved them. And at that time, everything met our standards. I haven't received any complaints in the time period since then, and I'm not aware of if the city has, the city has received complaints. So again, I'm kind of here tonight to hear if there are specific complaints, what those are, so maybe we can pinpoint further. But from my review so far, it looks like everything was done correctly.
Shane, this is Jason. I think from the last meeting, there was several residents that talked about when it rained, the pond overflows, and I'm not sure if it overflows quickly or how soon, but, and then it runs through most of the neighborhood's backyards. So the discussion was, is that normal? Or are we increasing the problem if we save additional footage up there? So that was why we asked you to comment on it and look at the, and look at the retention or the runoff pond.
Sure, so I guess in order for me to comment on that, I need to know, has the, I mean, do they feel like something has changed recently, which has caused this now to run in their backyards? Or is this a matter where it's always ran in their backyards for the past 15 or 20 years? And they're just concerned that adding more to that with the plans, the plans or what you're discussing tonight is going to cause a new problem, not necessarily, not necessarily that there is an existing problem.
You need to unmute yourself. There we go.
Okay, I'm unmuted. I'm unmuted there.
I'm just wondering, this is not the part of the meeting where the residents are free to say their three minutes piece, so I'm sure they have some response to some of this, but...
We got a few things to take care of first. First row, is the applicant got anything to add here? Any comments or statements at this time?
If not.
No, I have nothing, uh, seems like you're covering it all. Like I say, I mean, the pond was, had been working for the last four years with nobody complaining. All of a sudden it's going to change ownership and now there's a problem, I guess. That's what I was kind of wondering. I mean, if you get two, like last summer, we had times, we had two inches of rain in an hour and a half. Things are going to get wet and they're going to flood. You know, I'm not saying that was a chime and this is what happened, but.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm going to ask the clerk at this time, she'll verify the illegal publications and mailings and postings have been completed.
Yes.
Okay. Then we'll, we'll open up if the public has a comment to make that hasn't been made before. They'd like to address our engineer or the planner. They, they, it's open for you to do it at this time.
If you'd like to comment, make sure you say your name and your address.
This is Joseph Hanson. Can you hear me?
Yes.
5460 199th Avenue Northwest. Uh, I heard that the, I think the, the apron was going to be 33 feet. Does that cover up to the, uh, whatever the drive is that will enter into the large parking lot?
I, I don't believe it will.
So that's been unaddressed, right? We've got a road that's going to have 140 cars driving on it that weren't meant to be driven on. And we've not talked about that yet. Can we talk still about the road?
Uh, this is something that the, uh, city council could, can address because nothing's going to be done until the spring on that, uh, putting that apron on.
I don't think I understand what you mean.
You don't understand? Well, the apron's not going to be put on till this spring. And so it's going to give the time the city look like, uh, look at what they, they should do up to the approach that comes into the, uh, the lot.
What do you mean by look at?
Well, because there was talk at one time, maybe the city will look into having that tarred up to the, uh, approach that comes in.
Is there, we could make that part of these conditions for the special permit though?
Uh, well, this is something that we, we, uh, we can look at and talk about, uh, when we meet this, uh, planning and zoning.
But we're trying to, I'm still hearing that having a car lot on a road that wasn't designed to have a car lot is, is not a condition that we need to set as part of the special use permit. Right? To fix, to make it so the road at least goes out to the drive that, that will bring all these cars in and out.
Uh, somebody else would like that, would they like to address this to clear this up?
Hey, Joseph, this is Jason. Hey, I, um, from Liz's comments, the state has a, you know, when they, when they pave the shoulder or when they pave the approach, it goes back 33 feet. They aren't going to do the work till the spring. And I don't know that it's a condition of the permit, but the discussion of the city council will be, is it something that we should take on as a, as a city to pave that back either to the, either to the parking lot or the, um, to the car sale driveway or back to the next commercial parking lot? And again, this is something that we talked about last time. Is it something that, um, we would look at a cost share with the residents in the, in the area? Um, how they would like to address it, but understand that, uh, that was what the feedback was from the cities or the state that Liz got.
And, and the reason we're considering that feedback is because we're recognizing that having a car lot there causes more damage to the road than it was intended to receive, right?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Understockman? Um, I don't, I think Mr. Hanson needs to hear a little bit about the, what's happened thus far. In other words, um, when this project started, we looked back at the minutes and determined that the council did not require the road to be upgraded when Burns Auto expanded their operations. Um, and then Mr. Sansby brought a concept plan to the council for discussion. And, um, we discussed the road topic. Uh, it, you know, while it wasn't a formal motion, they more or less said, um, that it wouldn't be Mr. Sansby's responsibility, um, that they would talk about ways to address the problem. So, um, yeah, you're right. The MINDOT apron only goes 33 from the center line. And we do have that, that gap in there. So, um, you know, I believe talking to the city attorney too about options would be beneficial. But what I said earlier, I believe maybe before you were even joined was that, um, MINDOT was the one that said they were going to pave the apron next year and that, that gives the city time to talk about options.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I, I understood that and I heard that. I just, I, I think what I'm hearing is since you already decided, whatever time, 2016, that the road did not need to be improved in order to maintain that many cars on a lot, that we do not have that option now to impose it on Mr. Sansby as part of the special permit issue. That's what I'm hearing, right?
Not that we can't, but the difficulty showing the increased, um, you know, intensification of the use is the right word.
Can I offer, offer some logic for that? I mean, before, there was a few, maybe a few managers operating that car lot. He's now going to have to have, to fill those offices and, and make a profit here. He's going to have to have a lot of people moving cars in order to pay their rent. There's more people moving cars than were moving cars before. Uh, and I think that, I mean, that leads me to logically conclude there's going to be more cars driving on that road than there were at the previous auto dealership, which was only managed by one or two people. I'm sure Mr. Sansby even knows how many cars need to be moved per month in order for people to meet their rent. And I bet he has those calculations he could share with us. And I wonder if we can compare them to what was moved previously, as I'm sure the previous managers have a record of. That might give us a mathematical comparison.
I could maybe try to help him answer that a little bit.
Go ahead.
I think Liz is, um, um, not available again for some reason, but go ahead, Rick.
Um, these offices, the state law requires these people, all they're, all they need to have a dealer's license is a storefront, five parking spots with a bathroom. It'd be, all they need to be there is four hours a week. And, uh, there's not going to be 24 dealers there at one time. I've got a few offices at my shop at St. Francis Auto Parts. And a couple of them dealers, I've seen them three times in a year. They got two cars out there. They come up, switch them out. And it's very little traffic. And that road, there hasn't been any, 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 in and out of that car lot. It is pretty rough. It's got a lot worse in the last month and a half, two months since I've been working on this deal. And it's not from the car lot. It's from the people that live on that road. So it isn't all the car lot's fault with that road problem. And the traffic will be very minimum. Like I say, these people will be hardly around there. And they're all legit people. You've got to have a very good credit score to get a bond from a dealer, for a dealer. And you have to have, if they do a criminal check on your background, you can't have any felonies to get a, to get a dealer license from the state. Cause that's all, all taken care of through the state. They monitor that. And if you don't pass all their stuff, you don't get a license. If they don't get a license, they have no use to have another car lot. So, uh, I, I guess, you know, I don't see, I would think it'd be a benefit for the neighborhood versus not.
So Ellen, this is Roy.
Roy Johnson, St. Lehman address?
Uh, Roy Johnson, 54th.
We lost you. Well, we heard it was 54 or something. Right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's taking that, if you're going to base the month and a half or sadly mistaken. Much sadly mistaken. You, you don't have any history with it. There was, it was significant. Yep, I'm done.
Liz, I think it's back on.
I'm here.
Hey, this is Joseph Hanson. Sorry, I wanted to just respond to Mr. Sansby after he responded to me. And I, I would, I would say the same thing Roy was trying to get across there, which is, that's a pretty poor, uh, set of data to be using as your judgment of whether or not it was the car lot that affected the road. Uh, like, like Roy said, as soon as it rains, it takes more damage. It rains more recently than it did before in the summer, right? Come on, man. Uh, also, you know, you did not share the numbers that I asked for, which is how much rent are these people going to have to pay and how many cars are they going to have to move to pay it? Why do you have 24 offices if you're only going to fill two of them? What I'm hearing is a rosy picture that you've painted, uh, of what you imagine sounds good to the residents, which, which from our experience is not the case. And we still have not talked about the road. How many more cars are going to have to move to, to fill 24 offices? Even if they're there intermittently, uh, to, to pay your rent?
Thank you, sir. Are there any other comments people would like to make to our engineer or our planner?
Well, I don't think my request for the mathematical comparison should be dismissed. I think it's a valid line of reasoning.
Well, I, I don't know if they can really come up with the figures at this time.
He's trying to run a business and he's going to make a profit. He knows how much he's got to fill. He, absolutely, these calculations can be made.
He, he, he did make the statement. He didn't know how often these people would be there. Maybe like he said, uh, one case, they were three times in one year. So he made that statement. So let's go on. Let's go to somebody else.
Yes, my name is Ron Oster. I live at 5477 199th Avenue Northwest. And, um, I actually have to cry foul on that, uh, deal about this paving the road thing. When we went to that meeting and most of all of us were there, when they first announced that they were going to pave that, they said that that road was going to be paved to the second driveway of that car lot. And when we all left, we were expecting that road was to be paved. And lo and behold, after it was paved, it was decided by either planning and zoning or the city council that they did not have to pave it because it was too expensive. So that choice was not told to us, the people that live on this street. So as I'm sitting here, um, you know, the road was tore up more because of that. And as far as I'm concerned, if there has to be an improvement on this road, it should fall to the car lot. Not the people that live on this road. I lived here for 25 years and until that car lot was built up, our road was just fine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. If somebody else can, wants to make a statement, it doesn't apply to what has already been said, go ahead. If not, uh, ask the, uh, people in the planning and zoning if they have any, uh, discussions or questions here. Cause, um, I went away from the, uh, meeting, the last meeting we had on this public hearing on this with the understanding, the biggest issue was the runoff of the water. And, uh, I, I, to my knowledge, I've never heard it said, told before that, that the city was going to pave that, uh, road there. There's several ways it could be done. It'd be assessed to the people, the city could play part of it. But this is something that they, they can, they'll be looking at within the next six months or so. So, uh, is there any other discussions or questions that we have on the planning and zoning?
Hey Liz, you said that state will go back 33 feet. How much further back do we need to go to cover up that, the dealership parking lot entrance?
Uh, I have a pretty good, I'm going to look up, grab it. So from the center line to the end, hold on. From the center line, Highway 47, west edge of the first drive is 96 feet. So if you take 33 away from that, you're looking at 63 feet. If you go in driveway, that's 236 feet less the 33, so that would be 203 feet.
203 feet to capture both commercial properties, 63 feet to cap, capture the auto lot, correct?
Correct. You want to go on with the public hearing, Mr. Chair, or ask if there's any last comments?
Okay, uh, we'll come back to the audience again. Is there, is there any final comments they want to make from the, uh, about this?
Again, I still would like to comment about the road. What I'm, what, what you're telling us is that instead of the road being the responsibility, uh, of the car lot owner, we're trying, you want, you keep ensuring you were going to, the city council is going to address this, city council is going to address this. That means the cost is going to get put on us as opposed to the person who's damaging it more on the residents, which I'm not okay with. I'd like that to be stated. I think you should take it up now and it should be part of the special permit.
No, this is, this is your opinion on it and you have a right to your opinion. But the thing is that, uh, this is something that the city's going to have to look at. And, and I don't know what they're going to do or, or anything's going to be done. Maybe, uh, you'll be assessed if they do it all the way back, uh, the whole area back there. Uh, I'm not sure what's going to happen. This is something that the city will have to make a decision on. So if we have, do we have any more questions about this?
Yes. Can you tell me why we cannot make it part of the special permit now?
Why? Number one, you as a citizen don't have the authority to do it. We as a planning and zoning can only make a recommendation to the city council and the city council makes the final decision.
As far as the special permit conditions go, correct?
Yeah, anything, anything that's added on, anything we recommend here tonight is up to the city. They accept that or they can add things on, the council can.
So why would we, why would we not recommend that that be added on as part of the conditions?
Well, this, this is something that, this is a decision that's going to have to be made later here after this meeting is closed.
Okay.
So, Dale, this is Roy again. I'd like to make a comment about that. Is I believe if you go back and look at the original approval by the planning and zoning, that, uh, the upgrade of the that the upgrade of the from the P ended four or five years ago, it went to the city council and the city council deleted the road. It wasn't the P and Z.
You were cutting out. I, I couldn't even hear what you were saying.
The P and Z initiative.
You're still cutting out. I, I can't, I can't hear.
I, I think I can try to help clarify. So Ron, this is Jason. So last month, the discussion around what to do with the road, um, we gave, we asked Liz to do some further investigation to find out if the state was responsible for paving it back, um, the shoulder piece of it, how far back was the right of way? And then what would the additional cost be to get it to the driveway, to the first driveway and to the second driveway? And then we stated that time too, would the citizens in the area like, would it be something where they'd be interested in paving the whole cul-de-sac? So we went with a couple of different options last month. I don't know that we had a firm answer. Liz came back and said the state only goes back 33 feet. And I think the planning and zoning has to make a recommendation on, do we believe that the um car lot should be responsible for the other? Oh, great. So I don't know how far I got before I cut out, but um, so I can try to paraphrase again. So last month, we discussed the road. Liz was gonna get some additional information from the state. How far back can the state go? What does it cost to go back to the first driveway? What does it cost to go back to the second driveway? And what's the best way to pay for that? So I think as a planning and zoning, we've gotta make the call on what do we think is right uh for a recommendation to the city council. Did that cut out?
We heard that. Thank you so much, Jason.
Okay.
Yeah, my understanding is when this was approved four or five years ago, the road was part of the update that was going to be.
That I, that I don't know. I can't help you with that. Sorry, I thought you were talking last month.
No, Mr. Chair?
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. Let the, the uh, I think our planner wants to speak to this.
I just wanted to answer the question. And yeah, I did state before in the planning and zoning had previously in 2016 recommended a paving of the road. And then when it went to council, it um, it was removed from one, as a condition.
Okay, thank you, Liz. It, it's, anybody else has anything to say that hasn't been addressed up to this point? You're welcome to say it right now, but we're not gonna trash over all, all this stuff again.
So I just have one thing. My name's Marie Ostendorf. I'm at 5477 199th Avenue Northwest. Um, so the semi trucks that are coming in hauling cars in and out, that is a lot of wear and tear on the roads. I would just like to state that, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Is there any others?
This is Adam Cook, 5320 Old Viking Boulevard. Uh, haven't been able to meet in the other meetings, but uh, just have a question. Is there like a vote or anything that will take place for area neighbors that are for or against this? Or is it just totally up to the city? And we can just ask questions?
That's what the public hearing is for, is to get your input into it so we can take everything into consideration and what, what our recommendation will be to the city council.
All right, so we are against it and do not see any value in what this brings to the city of Nellin or the area.
You, you have a right to your point of opinion. Uh, is there anybody else that would like to speak to this? If not, we'll, we'll close this, close the public hearing then. At this time, now the planning and zoning will ma- make their, their recommendations and uh, Liz, is it, do, do we have to go over the recommendations you made these? I believe there's uh, 30 of them. Tyler Stockman, do we have to go, you have to go over those?
Yes, we should go through the findings and talk about any of that outs.
You go ahead and take over then. We lost her again.
Hello?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Will you talk to me?
Are being debated or what?
No, I, I lost. You can hear, can you hear me? I lost you guys.
Yeah, we can hear you. And um, Liz, I made you the presenter again, so you can do whatever you need to do.
Cause I can't see a thing. I've lost everything.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you, but I can't see a thing.
Can everybody else see?
Yep.
Liz, you can hear it. Okay, right?
We can see Dale too.
You can see me?
We can see you.
And we can hear you, Dale.
Okay, Dale, would you like to go through all the conditions or just the ones in question?
Yes, well, we, I don't know, maybe, maybe the people here would like to hear all the conditions.
Okay. Issue number one, multiple principal buildings on one lot of record are always maintained in control of one entity. The existing residence is in permanent use and will be allowed to continue for up to two years from the date of IUP approval when it shall be converted to a commercial use. It could be converted sooner than that, but he has up to two years to convert the house. Once converted from house to a commercial use, it can never go back to a house. Uh, the maximum number of vehicles permitted on the subject property may not exceed 144, 24 of which are employee customer spaces and 120 vehicles for sale. At no time shall vehicles for sale occupy the employee or customer spaces. Vehicles may only be parked in designated spaces, not within driveways or on any portion of the property not approved as parking, not on the grass or yard areas. Individual parking spaces do not need to be striped. However, driveways must be marked and kept clear of vehicles and other obstacles and order must be maintained at all times. No parking, loading, unloading, pickup or drop off of vehicles will be allowed on the public streets. So that means any semis coming into the site will have to be able, they'll have to leave a through, a throughway so that semi can loop around um, on the site and then come back out onto the public road. Uh, the north building exterior shall be amended to show such as glass, stone or brick. The eight, 89.8 foot buffer yard on the west side of the property adjacent to the residential uses is maintained at all times, including existing trees, shrubs, natural areas, wetlands, ponds, or any combination thereof. That's the buffer. The property owners and or sales agents shall encourage the use of Highway 47 for test drives rather than 199th Avenue. Number 10 is regarding landscaping. Uh, does the commission want to require any additional landscaping on the west side? Or anywhere else? Or do they feel that what's there is satisfactory? So circle number 10 to come back to that. All trees, grass and landscaping shall be maintained throughout the life of the business and shall be replaced should the vegetation become diseased, damaged or destroyed. Two parking and turnaround spaces on the south end of the lot shall be striped as a no parking zone to ensure space for vehicle maneuvering should the parking lot be fully occupied. The parking area shall be maintained in good condition at all times and shall be resurfaced or repaired as it shows wear. Uh, the driveway to the residence is removed and graded and revegetated. No parking shall be allowed anywhere on site except on the improved surfaces as shown on the approved site plan. Fencing is required to enclose the storage container and ref east area with a six foot fence in conformance with the zoning ordinance screening requirements. The property, property owners and sales agents remain in compliance with State of Minnesota Automobile Dealer Licensing regs at all times. The hours of operation shall be 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, by appointment only on Saturdays between 8:00 and 7:00 and closed on Sundays. Any changes to structures, parking areas, lighting, signs require an application for building permit and review by the city building official and city planner. The drains in the north building are sealed prior to commencement of building renovations. The submission of signed plans, details about mounting and assigned permits shall be required as a condition of approval. Plans shall require review and approval by the zoning administrator and the building official. Directional signs which indicate the main paved easterly site entrance. The customer parking and handicap parking areas are provided on site in compliance with the city's shall come into compliance within six months of project approval. 23, the site plan shall be revised to show the location of light poles and proposed location of lights on the structures, all of which shall be subject to review and approval by the zoning administrator in compliance with Section 11 dash 4 dash 19 and approval by the state electrical inspector if required. Number 24 is what I added about lighting, requiring a lighting plan. Uh, removal of the posts on top of the north building, detailed specifications for all proposed lights, meaning um, the type of light, the brightness, the locations, the lighting pattern, um, so we can ensure that uh, these lights are not shining on adjacent property. Sidewalks and entryways have to meet uh building code requirements, which is one, one foot candle at the walking surface. So typically, there's a light required at every entrance door. He's got 24 doors. But one light in between two doors may be enough uh to light a walkway. That'll just be dependent upon building official approval and the type of light selected. Post lights shall not exceed 3,000 K, which is the color, and they shall be no more than 30 feet in height, fully hooded and mounted at a 90 degree angle to the post and parallel to the ground. There shall be no outside storage of any kind, including but not limited to auto parts, tires, junk and debris. There shall be no discharge of oil or hazardous substances into the adjacent stormwater pond, wetlands, ditches or anywhere on the subject property other than what is typically expected as residual from the operation and parking of vehicles. All vehicles for sale or parked anywhere on the site shall be licensed and operable. No auto repair shall be allowed on the property, only detailing, cleaning or minor changes to vehicles such as changing tires, mirrors or accessories. There shall be no auxiliary or unauthorized businesses permitted such as tire sales, windshield tinting, et cetera, without approval of a, of an amended IUP. For the purpose of this IUP, detailing means a top to bottom thorough cleaning of a vehicle, which may include some light cosmetic touch-ups, but the process does not include paintwork or body repairs. The subject must
We lost you, Liz, on 28. We're not hearing you, Liz, if you're talking. Dale? Dale, you need to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now, Ellen?
Yes.
All right, sorry.
It's okay. Well, you landed at number 28. You were starting there.
28, the subject property must be in compliance with all state, county and city building codes and is subject to review and approval by the silly, city building official. All snow cleared from the property must be stored on site. Snow may not be pushed plowed, snow blown or shoveled onto adjacent public streets, right of way ditches or adjacent properties. Um, condition 30 is regarding the termination of an interim use permit, which can happen on the following, based on the happening of any of the following events. The date or event stated in the permit as determined by the council, any violation of the conditions under which the permit was issued, um, any change of occupancy or ownership of the principal use, any discontinuation of the use for a year. And um, if the business or business is not put into effect uh, within the first year, so he's got one year to fulfill these conditions. If he needs additional time, he needs to submit that in writing 30 days before the end of the first year. Um, again, 31 reiterates that the city council may revoke an interim use permit upon violation of the conditions. And revised plans are submitted which document and address the changes herein. The applicants are responsible for all costs associated with the processing of this request. That is it. 33 conditions. Any thoughts or changes, questions?
Let's go back to 10.
Number 10. Landscaping. There's 89.8 feet on the west side. You've got some um, natural vegetation there. There's some spruce trees and some other kind of brush, I guess. What's the commission's feeling on the landscaping? Um, there could also be some landscaping required in the front along 47, for instance. Um, otherwise, give me your thoughts on that.
Just to be clear, there was discussion of a fence going up along 47. Is that still part of the plan? Has that changed at all? Um, as far as the western side, there, the tree coverage of this currently there is not as thick as one would probably like it. But I'm not sure how we should address that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
That's a good point. Ms. Perrow, he did say he still plans to put up that um, He did say he still plans to put up that um, sort of a three-rail type vinyl fence along forty-seven. If, um, yeah, I mean, I guess the landscaping along the west side, it's fairly dense up by the street and then it gets a little more sparse toward the kind of back half of the lot, between there and the water's edge. So you know, if needed, you could, you could possibly have some large shrubs or, you know, spruce or pine trees added back there.
Liz, don't we normally request when it's a commercial property up to residential that there has to be some amount of barrier, whether it's vegetation or an actual fence?
Well, right, this is in that hundred-foot buffer, so that's what the ten point two-foot variance is for, because we can't change the setback of the house, you know, which is becoming a commercial building.
Agreed.
But you can add vegetation. Um, the buffer is, um, yeah, considered to be wetlands, any natural areas, doesn't necessarily have to be trees, but it's more the physical separation. But in light of the ten point two-foot variance, it does make some sense to require something.
And Ivan back there, is it, is uh, is the recommendation a fence or is it additional shrubs slash trees?
Um, I walked back there. I guess it might be more fitting just to have some natural vegetation, in my opinion, I guess, because everything around it's kind of natural and then as it, as you, you know, meet Mr. Day's property next door, um, you know, his is kind of wild or whatever on that side too, so.
Commissioner Perrow, um, I guess from the standpoint of commission and uh, you know, uh, of an opinion, um, I think the natural part of it would be better. It's going to eventually grow up more and provide even more um, screening. The lights was the concern and that is why I believe that the buffer is what is um, more of a concern. They say the lighting, well, we're hopefully going to change a lot of that lighting too with these restrictions that have been placed. Um, so some vegetation would be a good thing because it will grow and create more um, screening between the resident and commercial.
Anybody else got any comments to make on this? What, um, Planner Stockman, what would you suggest for additional screening that we would put
Can you hear me now?
Yes. What, what do you suggest for additional screening, screening to put in there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, keep talking.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you Liz. Keep, did you hear his question about the, your recommendation?
Um, about the landscaping, I would recommend that you just require submission of a landscape plan for screening and then I will work with Mr. Sans to be on submission of a design to be submitted to the city council before the meeting.
Okay, that's, I think that's a good recommendation that uh, that you do that then. Thank you Liz.
Commissioner Perrow here. Um, I'm, I don't know that we want to add any additional screening um, or landscape to the front, just because we don't want to minimize visuals to the road as um, vehicles pull out onto Highway four to seven, so I don't know that we're looking for anything up on the front eastern lot line, but more so just the western lot line to separate public or the, the personal residents and the commercial residents.
I agree with you Commissioner Perrow. What about the rest of the committee?
Yeah, good comments Kelly, I think they're fair.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we went through all these recommendations here.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Does the commission have any more questions for Engineer Nelson?
Um, he was going to stick around through the um, buildability discussion, it's part of the amendments.
Hi.
Thank you though.
Are there any questions that you have for our engineer? I think he covered it pretty well. Okay, uh.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Planner.
Um, just want to be sure you're okay with the proposed hours of operation and um, I'd like to discuss the lighting and whether you not, whether or not that
Commissioner Perrow here.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I believe what I've read through on the lighting sounds sufficient and sounds good. Yes, we do need to, you know, look into what lights be placed where and there should not be need for air light above every door, but equally spaced just to light the walkways. Um, as far as motion lights, I'm trying to figure out if that was going to be just for the buildings or if that was also going to be for the lot as well, as far as the lighting goes. And then the other thing I wanted to just throw out there was, we never did discuss anything about the roadway and how it's going to be affected for the residents and this applicant.
What, what are you referring to as a roadway Commissioner Perrow?
What our recommendation is, is that what you're looking for Kelly?
Yeah, are we going to have a recommendation for him to do additional feet beyond what the state is going to do, or are we going to look, have the city look into it for the city's cost? What, what are we going to do?
Well, yeah. So it's, help me with this procedural piece, is the public hearing closed and we're discussing as a team or where are we at right now Dale?
Yeah, team, let's talk about this.
Yeah, it's closed, we're, we're making the final decision right here. This, this is the recommendation we could make to the uh, the city that they check into it and see what's, what can be done here to the road.
Hang on, let me unmute myself, this thing mutes me every three minutes, um, every three seconds. So I think from the last meeting, the road was an issue, so we got to have a specific action there. Um, the septic system, systems, that was a big discussion point last month. Uh, Liz came back and I think there's a plan in place there. Um, I think Shane did a good job talking about the runoff pond and we've got the facts there in terms of what it looks like. There's a big concern with the uh, um, the soil and if it was contaminated. I think Liz did a good job there answering those questions. The lighting was a big concern last time and Liz talked about preserved dark skies and I guess that clarity that I need Liz is, if they follow our current zoning ordinances, do the issues go away from a lighting aspect?
I don't see Liz.
Oh, here we are.
Oh, okay.
I was on the phone, so if you could unmute my phone connection, then I can talk when this thing goes out.
I can't unmute anybody.
Oh, alright. Um, so, let's see, light, your question was about whether it meets the ordinance.
So question is if, if the current, because you talked about, the current lighting probably does not meet the current ordinances, so if the lighting meets, if his lighting plan meets the current ordinances in terms of managed glare, uplight, off, um, off-site, um, off-site, what did you say, off-site in, imposing to the neighborhood, if it meets that plan, which is currently written into our ordinances, does the lighting issue go away?
Uh, yeah, we have, we have a good lighting ordinance, so the only thing it really doesn't address is the color of light, so it's a big deal though to stay within 3,000 K or less would be the preferred color of light to meet this dark sky association um, factor. But you know, the other factors, we do meet without a problem and we will, you know, I'll review a plan that he submits.
Okay, because the currents, if you went out there and looked at it today when it was lit up as the previous car lot, would it not meet the ordinances that we have today?
Um, right, the, the tall pole that's on top of the building, it was grandfathered and that was there previously, but with the change in user, we can have that um, you know, require the zoning compliance. Uh, as far as the lights that were along the road, those were actually stolen, so they're, those are not there, but they were aimed inappropriately. Uh, they were not pointing straight to the ground, they were pointing more outward and back toward the neighborhood, which was I think the heart of the problem.
So if we discuss, um, similar to the submission of a landscape plan, if we have a, if we have a condition that says uh, the lighting's got to be conditional to a submission and approved via the uh, um, current ordinances, you can review that and make sure it's aligned with what we're, with what our current plan is, right?
Correct, yeah, we addressed that in conditions twenty-three and twenty-four.
And then the other issue a little bit was the uh, privacy, privacy fence and what we were doing in that space and I think that was, I think we have a plan there. Um, the last discussion point from uh, last month that we haven't talked about yet was um, there was a, at least a concern from the citizens that there's a higher percentage of uh, um, police calls and sheriff reports. So Liz, have you done any research in that space or some discussion around that?
Are you there Liz? Can't hear you. Can't unmute number six, caller user six, which I think that's you. Thank you everyone for your patience, I'm not sure why this is so complicated this time.
Can you hear me Alan?
Yes.
Okay. Wow, so sorry, um, I'm back to the phone. So regarding the police calls, I did review all the police calls that were submitted by, I believe, Mr. Ostendorf. And I broke those down in the report with a, in that chart. Most of those originated from off-site, in other words, they were thefts of vehicles, thefts of auto parts, there was a dealer plate stolen, um, a significant number of those were calls made by Mrs. Fonson or her family based on concerns, uh, people trespassing, walking around after hours, et cetera. So a lot of that is out of our control and I really didn't see any of the police reports that were um, problematic, you know, as far, I mean, there was some obvious management issues and you know, even the auto sales guys were there after hours doing things they weren't supposed to do, so that was part of the whole problem. There were illegal activities um, beyond our wildest dreams there that, you know, are now gone, so you know, part of the bad taste in everybody's mouth is, is from this, uh, the people there previously. So there are no concerns um, from my end or the, the sheriff's side of things necessarily.
Okay, thank you, thank you Liz. Uh, I, I think we're ready for uh, a motion at this time to make our recommendation to the city, uh, somebody would
Mr. Chair?
Get motion, yes.
This is Jeff Pelon, just a couple of questions on item fourteen, this is the driveway to the residence is removed and graded. Uh, when does that take place? There's no, no timeframe on that.
Um, well, it would be anytime since the first year I guess, uh, or if you specify a time, that would be acceptable as well.
I think you'd want to specify a time because it, you've got thirty items here, it's going to be hard to track them, so.
I would recommend then that it's tied to the um, interior changes of the house. Maybe when they get their CO for that residence or you know, which is converted to the office.
Commissioner Perrow, I was going to say that exact same thing, Stockman, that to tie it with this um, changing of the house residence.
Mr. Chair, then, how long is the contract for deed?
Am I right in saying two years, Mr. Sonderberg?
Um, no. Mr. Sans to be, can you answer that?
And then another clarification on um, item twenty-nine. Just to be clear, the problem we've had with snow removal, as all snow cleared from the property must be stored on site, snow may not be pushed, plowed, snow blown, or shoveled onto, I would say onto or across adjacent public streets, right-of-way ditches or adjacent properties. One of the, the problems we've had is explaining to people that they think they're pushing it out onto the road, but you're not allowed to push it across the road either, so just a clarification that it can't be pushed onto or across adjacent public streets.
Anything else you want to make, add a condition or a recommendation that the council just look at options for the road condition, or how do you want to address that?
I don't think it would hurt to make this a recommendation, recommendation that they check into it.
Commissioner Perrow here.
I, go ahead Kelly.
I did um, just some small research myself and I'm looking at this as being not just something we need to point to just this business owner, but we could also look at uh, talking to the north side of the road business owner. They do have a driveway that dumps out onto this road as well, so putting all the obligation out to just this business owner does seem a little bit silly and overstretched. Um, so I don't know how we can um, go about discussing Um, so I don't know how we can, um, go about discussing, uh, shared costs with the business owner across the street. Um, based on the numbers that I can kind of measure out myself, it was about 90 feet from, or 96 feet from the state line, uh, this end of the state line to the opposite side of Mr. Santsby's roadway. It's 125 feet from the state line then crossed to the north business is west driveway line. Hope that makes a lot of sense. Um, so maybe we can talk about how we can get the cost shared with both businesses so they both do get the perks to that so that their trucks, um, are using the same streets.
Yeah, Kelly, I think when, um, Liz talked about earlier, with less what the state's going to be responsible for, it's 63 feet to the backside of the, uh, auto lot dealership's driveway. And then it would be, Liz, correct me if I'm wrong, another 203 feet to the backside of the next, the next commercial properties driveway, or is it 203 feet less 60, so it's 140 feet?
Yeah, see, the driveway to the north is kind of in between the two. So, it's 96 feet to the first one. I had 160 feet to the edge, west edge of the north driveway. And then it's 236 to the west edge of the second driveway on the Sants to be parcel.
Perrow here. That's exactly what I kind of could figure out, too. Um, numbers I gave were to the western sides of the driveways there.
Okay. So, it's just a question of if we want to go to each person's first driveway or if we want to go all the way to that second driveway. Um, and, you know, may, if you want to just leave it generic, um, I don't know, just having the council look into options and different payment, you know, payment options and design options.
Well, I, my, my at least thought is, the, uh, I think we should put a condition on that that the auto property has to pave the 63 feet. I mean, it's 63 feet. And then we can discuss with the other owner if they want to pave back to their side of the driveway while they're doing the work. But the other property on the north side's not asking for a conditional use permit. It's already out there. So, I don't know that you're going to have a ton of opportunity, but, I mean, there, we know that there could be only a few cars there, but we're setting this, we're setting the lot up to have 120 cars. So, I would say we have to put a conditional permit or that's part of the permit is, he's got to pave that 63 feet. Which, I don't know if that's a huge request at 63 feet.
Well, especially if this is planner Stockman again, sorry, Mr.?
Go ahead.
Yep.
Especially if, um, you know, they work with MINDOT and they work with the local contractors to get, you know, reasonable bids, so. You know, maybe, I don't know, and we have several contractors, I believe, right in town, too, so maybe it wouldn't be a big problem, yeah.
We do have two, but I'm just looking at it going, there potentially could be 120 cars there that are routinely taken off for test drives that we're going to add to the, uh, car count on that road significantly. If it's just the 10 homes on that road, um, I would say you could go to the, go to the residents and say, do we want, do you guys want this upgrade or not? But we're introducing a, a large change here that maybe should have been dealt with the last time, but we have the opportunity to look at it again. So, I would propose we make that as part, part of the stipulation. At the same time, I don't think it would hurt to go to the commercial owner on the north to see if he would be interested in participating back to his lot because he might want it with his heavy equipment going across it. Um, but I don't know that you can tie that into this, um, CUP.
This is Ms. Perrow. Will Liz Stockman verify the distance from the state line? I thought it was 60 feet to the east side of the driveway, but 90 feet to the west side of the driveway for this applicant.
33, so that's 63 feet to the west side of the first driveway. 63 feet.
Okay, I'm confused now because I had written down that you said from the west edge of the first driveway to the center of the road was 96 feet, minus the 33 feet that MINDOT was covering leaves 66 feet for, that's, you know, potentially, is that correct?
No, it's 96 minus 33 is 63.
63, oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Uh, Chair Ames, Planner Stockman?
Yeah.
If I could just, uh, so I'm using the GIS measuring tool, uh, online and I'm coming up with slightly different numbers. So, I think if, if it's a recommendation of the planning zoning commission, you could just leave it at pave to the western edge of the driveway. Uh, you know, the western edge of the eastern driveway or the western edge of the second driveway and not maybe use a specific number. The, the probably the correct thing to do is to, uh, actually measure in the field, uh, the, the limits. One other thing to that point, uh, if, if you could use the wording that the applicant will be responsible for the cost of paving, uh, because we do not allow private, uh, entities to do work on our road without entering into some kind of a contract with us. So, in other words, anybody just can't go out on our roads and repair them as they see fit. They have to have some kind of a contract with us. That usually increases in complexity. So, that's something that could be, uh, figured out, uh, either way. There, there's, there are two possible ways to do it, so.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Shane. Well, and are we ready for a motion to, uh, make a motions or recommendation to the city? I know there's some.
Liz, Liz, how many conditions do you have in your report?
30. 33.
33 and we just added one on the, well, I'm, and we potentially 34 with the recommendation to, uh, have the owner responsible for the cost of paving to the west side of the first driveway?
Western edge of the first driveway.
Because we talked about the second driveway's coming out in two years anyway, correct?
Uh, no, that's a third driveway that's coming out.
Oh, that's right, the third driveway's coming out. But the main lot is tied to the first driveway.
Correct. It does, you know, driveway one for sure gets the heavier use, right?
Right. So, um, Kelly, you want me to take a shot at this or are you going to do it?
You could do it if you're ready.
All right, so I'm going to approve the, uh, recommendation for the 33 items that Liz documented in her, uh, conditional use overview with the added recommendation that the owner is responsible for paving up to the west side of the first main driveway. And then I'd also like to make the recommendation that, um, there's a yearly review with the sheriff to understand, is this thing driving a lot of crime in the area or not? I know that with the previous owner, it sounds like there was a lot of, uh, crime issues and we think this is going to be a ton better, but I just want something in there that says, hey, we're going to review this on a yearly basis with the sheriff's reports and the sheriff to understand, is this an abnormally high crime area for now then or not?
Jason, would you like to also add the buffer of the landscaping or the landscaping design plan on number 10?
Well said, yes.
Okay.
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 Commissioner Oles made the motion, does somebody like to make second this motion?
I will second, Commissioner Perrow.
Okay, okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? CNN will call for the vote. I guess we'll have to each individual vote and then, uh.
I approve.
Commissioner Perrow.
Approved.
Jason, is Barry there?
I'm looking and I don't see him still here.
I'll vote approve, but we've got to have four votes, don't we?
We're going to get through all this and.
Can someone text Barry to see if he fell off?
I believe Shane was saying that. Shane, did you text Barry?
I'm texting him right now.
Okay, thanks, I thought you were.
Calling back in. Okay. Commission? Commission?
Commissioner Stockman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, Barry's going to try to call in, he was disconnected.
Okay.
So, take, take a break.
We're waiting to see if Barry's going to be able to connect with us.
Okay.
He did say he was going to?
Yes, he did say he was going to call in.
Call in user six, is it there?
That's me.
That's Liz.
Okay. Does he know how to do it?
He's done it a number of times, so, I guess, but. Wondering if we can use this time and use Shane's time and maybe move into something else and come back to this? Or is that not legal?
Uh. Good question. Uh, I think we could probably come back to it. And then get the vote, get the vote again shortly.
As soon as Barry comes back?
Yeah, if Shane, if you want to talk a little bit about buildability, that was probably the main question relative to the ordinance amendments. Um, just describing, now, help me recollect, commissioners, I believe we, there was some confusion as to whether we want to stay with our three-foot separation and 23,000 square feet. Um, or if we want to go down to a two-foot separation. There's, you know, it's a bit complicated as we went round and round last time, but our current ordinance is a contiguous area of one acre with 23,000 square feet for the, um, primary and secondary septic and the structures. You know, that's the heart of your use.
Can you direct us where you're looking in the packet, Liz?
I'm not hearing.
Are you talking, Liz? Cause we can't hear you. You are.
Where did I cut off? I'm back on the phone now.
Okay. I asked if you could direct us where you're. In the packet, where you're talking about this separation stuff.
Oh, sorry. All right, amendments. Well, let's see. The ordinance drafts. We are into, let's see. Ordinance 2020 dash oh three, so it'd be the second ordinance.
I believe I found it on page 122. Um, in my, in my list.
Oh, in your PDF. Yeah, I'm not sure what page it is in the whole PDF. I was looking at my two ordinances. There's 2020 dash oh one and 2020 dash oh three.
You're looking at section one five on page two?
Yeah, there we go. Starting on page one of 2020 oh three, second, second ordinance.
Hello?
Is Barry here yet?
Hello?
I'm hearing you. Hello, who's saying hello?
Hello?
Oh, that just sounds like Barry.
That's Dale on the phone.
Oh, sorry. Oops.
Oh.
So Liz Stockman, this is Piero. Um, are you saying that you're looking at the ordinance 20 dash zero, 2020 dash zero three? And that's the one we're in reference to? That's the one that talks about buildability, right? Yeah, yep.
It was very wacky. We lost it.
So.
Yeah, same.
So the changes you see are what was recommended previously by Shane, okay, so. He. He, we added in condition two. Or excuse me, item two on page two. The minimum boring depth shall be six feet. When you're going, looking for model. Deeper is a little better because then you can see if you get to the actual water table or not. And then in item five, he added the clause, the city engineer may allow deviation from these separations. If the applicant submits evidence by a licensed geotech engineer that a lesser separation can be achieved. Um, but you'll see up in number one, we already allow. The basement floor elevation should maintain a one-foot separation. That was previously under item. Four there, and I just moved it up because it made more sense to put it up under one. But we currently do allow the one-foot separation for lowest floor. Uh, and all the. Um, the drain tile and the ceiling of the block and the insulating of basement block is all now part of city code. Or not city code, building code. So those things are all mandatory. It may, you know, may or may not have been when this was established. I don't know how long this ordinance has been in place exactly. Um, my recollection is that. You know, for the most part, in the 10 years I've been with now that I have not seen, you know, real trouble in meeting this, these requirements. Uh, we have slightly smaller lots proposed in the RRT area. Um, but, you know, I don't know if we wanna ask Shane his opinion on if we, if we narrow up those lots. Upper has to bring in Piero. You know, to create what some call gopher models, put the house on to meet the three-foot separation. You know, does that look funny or not? Or what's your opinion, Shane?
Again, so I don't think there is a right or wrong answer. I mean, this is. A difficult, uh, subject, mostly because we're, everything we're talking about is some separation to modeling soil. And, uh, modeling is something that happens over a long period of time of saturation. Uh, so it's a historical indicator of where groundwater was. But in my opinion, doesn't necessarily represent where groundwater is now. Most of the city now then, most of Anoka County was ditched in the 1940s, 50s and 60s. And when all that ditching occurred, it changed the groundwater. Uh, groundwater is also subject to fluctuations over time. Uh, and so, you know, it's, this is a really hard thing to, uh, say what's the right answer, what's the wrong answer? All you can do is compare, uh, what other cities, surrounding cities have used. And how that is working out for them. As far as having 23,000 square feet with the three-foot separation. Uh, my understanding is, is that what, that's like where the house would be? So at the house location, you would have this three-foot separation to. Modelled soil. Um. Where our ordinance requires 23,000, uh, typical house foundation might be a thousand square feet. Uh, something much smaller than this. And so the 23,000, you know, I don't think there's anything magical about the 23,000, it's just always been in our ordinance. That number could be reduced. I don't think we would see, uh, a huge. Negative impact. Um, but it would, it would be slightly harder to. Find buildable sites on a lot. Anyway, sites that met our code. So, you know, in other cities, you go, you go. Uh, across our borders and all of a sudden these buildability requirements change. So what a billable, buildable lot is really defined in our city code. And I think Planner Stockman did a pretty good job at summarizing, uh, what are some of our adjoining cities. Uh, use to determine buildability. Um, the other. Uh, one acre of, with one foot of separation. So to me, that's kind of like, uh, a yard area. Uh, and again, there's no right or wrong answer. Uh, some cities have a very small, uh, combined area, maybe 12,000 square feet. Uh, or something to that effect for both of these items that we're talking about. So one acre just would mean that there is a significant amount, not just upland. But upland with at least one foot of separation to historical groundwater.
I guess I have one question. This is Commissioner Piero. And it was in regards to why we would need to have such a detailed. Written sentences on number five. Uh, that the city engineer can allow deviation and then it follows up with certification by a licensed geoengineer, which. And then it follows with the piso, pizometer. What is the purpose for us to have this kind of information detailed out? In this situation? None of us really know what they are and what this is.
Sure, Commissioner Piero. So this, this particular, uh, code section would come into play. When somebody is proposing to actually place their basement into an area of modeled soil. So they, we might have an applicant say, I don't have, I don't meet one foot separation from modeled soil. However, I don't think that's accurate anymore. It, the groundwater has been influenced by ditching. Or by whatever it might be. And, uh, therefore I think that I would, you're, I think it'd be safe for me to place my foundation at the slower elevation. And what we're saying is that, uh. Most, uh, most people are not gonna be qualified to make a determination of what the groundwater might be. The best person qualified to make that determination would be a, uh. Be a geotechnical engineer that, that studies that work. And it's, all it is, is driving a, uh, it's a little plastic monitoring well. And so that monitoring well has a, a, uh, usually a metal head on it. They just drive it in the ground 10 or so feet. And then they go out there and record the, the elevations, uh, every so often. So it's not a really expensive test. It's probably less disruptive than digging a big hole.
Shane, could I, could I interrupt you?
Sure.
See, I don't know how to do that. Yeah, just a second, Piero.
You're on, Dale. We, we can hear you, Dale.
Okay, I, I got, I got Shane on the phone. He, he, uh, can he, can he vote over the phone here?
You mean Barry?
I got him on the speakerphone.
Are you saying Barry? Is that who you're talking about?
Do you hear him?
Is this Barry?
Yes, I'm on the phone here with Dale.
Okay, yes, we can hear you. Did he explain the motion?
Yes.
Yes, he did. Yep, and I would approve the vote.
Okay, so he's in agreement, so all in favor.
Okay, then. Should we call you back when you vote on the other one and get your, on that one too? You got it in front of you there with all the changes.
Okay, well, I guess we're trying to get back into the.
Okay.
Let me go back in by the phone number again. I don't know.
Yeah, we'll go to the email you got. Say that again. Okay, I'll go back to talking to you. I'll talk, call you later, okay? Bye. Yes.
You're, it's you, Dale.
Okay, we're still on here. Yeah, he, he did vote yes over the phone. Uh, and we'll, I'll call him back on the next one, then we'll go to vote on that.
So all in favor? Unanimous?
Yeah, all, yeah, all in favor say aye.
They did already.
Aye.
Okay, they did. Okay, so that one did pass. And he, he definitely wanted to have the road tarred. Okay, and, uh. Now, should we, this one's over with now, so we'll go to the city council on, I believe it's the eighth of December. And so we, we could open this up, other public hearing. He's gonna try to get back on if he can. He's trying everything to get back on, but we won't let him back on. So should we, should we open the next public hearing then?
Uh, let's let Shane finish, um.
Okay.
And I, you know, I didn't discuss with any of the changes that were made either, so.
I mean, team, can we do this without having a quorum? And is there anything?
From what I know, this is Commissioner Piero. Uh, from what I know, we can discuss it. Uh, we cannot vote without having a full quorum.
But Barry's trying to come back on, so maybe if he goes back to the email, he can get back on.
That's what I told him. Go back to the email. He says, just ask him for numbers and everything else in the.
You should be able to just click right on the link and come in.
That's what I told him. Maybe click where it says join. Okay, Shane gonna continue discussing this then, or?
Uh, Chair Ames, I think I'll just take a break. I kinda explained the, the 23,000 square feet with three-foot separation. I explained the one acre with the one foot of separation. Uh, I think both of those areas could be reduced at the city's preference. It wouldn't be a requirement. But you can certainly fit the required items of say a. Five to 6,000 square foot house. Uh, and, you know, a septic, a primary septic system and an alternate septic system in a smaller space. So it certainly would be allowable and it wouldn't have any negative impacts from my perspective. Uh, to reduce those. It'd more just be a, a community preference. Uh, and then I also went over the pizometer and the cases in which that test would be used. Uh, I think I stand for some questions if there's any questions on any of those three items.
Mr. Chair? Planner Stockman? Can you hear me? You're muted, Dale.
Yes, I can hear you, Planner Stockman.
Okay, I just wanted to state that. You have any opinion, Shane, on accessory buildings regarding modeling? We don't have any little floor requirements for accessory buildings of any kind. It's just, uh, as long as they're outside of a wetland or a drainage event, anything's kind of open game. Is that your thought too, Shane?
Uh, yes, my experience that most other communities allow accessory buildings. Uh, with lesser separations than principal structures. Uh, they do generally require them to be outside of a hundred-year floodplain. Uh, but I have not seen other communities with, uh, a separation to the floor elevation.
Are you there, Liz? If you're trying to talk, we can't hear you.
Yeah, I'm here. I went in and out and I did not say anything. So I heard Shane say. Um, outside of a hundred-year floodplain and then what was the last part, Shane?
I, I think that was it, Planner Stockman.
All right, thanks. So I guess back to the commission. Any concerns, thoughts? How do you feel like you wanna move this forward?
Without, without a quorum, we're probably gonna continue the meeting, don't we?
Well, we still need to come up with a resolution or a suggestion as to what we.
Dale?
Yes.
Barry, yay.
Yeah, I back on here.
We're not there. Woo!
Sorry about that, everyone.
It's okay. We need you one more time.
Yes.
Okay, so Barry, Shane just kind of summarized for us. Uh, the use of pizometers and the potential for. Um, you know, lowering a basement based on some monitoring. And that the area required. For separation, uh, in our current code could be reduced. Do you have any thoughts on that buildability?
Uh, are you talking the area could be reduced?
Yeah, the area could be reduced. Well, so could the separation distance, but we have, yeah, 23,000 square feet of. Um, three-foot separation. And some cities are, two of the cities around. And some cities, two of the cities around us have, you know, around 11,000, which is, you know, half of what we have.
Right. I, I still like the idea of high ground, I guess. I don't like the, of going all that far down. I mean, you're talking a half, half acre of very usable space on a piece of property. Um, I don't think that's too much to ask. Uh, if we want to reduce it, I, you know, whether you go down to 15,000, something like that, but uh, uh, otherwise I myself am not in favor of it.
So, so if I could just clarify to, to Mr. Wagner's point. One thing that I often see in soil borings, particularly soil borings in now then, or any place that has uh, finer soils, so a higher soil content or a higher clay content, is that the the modeling generally follows the contours of the topography. So in other words, if you have a 40 foot high hill, your modeling elevation at the top of the hill might only be a couple of feet down, two to three feet down. And at the bottom of the hill might be two or three feet down. And it's all based on if there's a confining layer someplace below the surface. So this separation to modeling isn't always necessarily the same as separation or high ground. So I just wanted to make that clarification. There's a lot of times when we, on the Brian's Bend development, which we, you know, we receive five to six soil borings per lot. And it's, it's not a constant elevation. Those, those elevator, or those uh, modeling elevation generally con, or follow the topography of the ground. And a lot of times they're, they're less than three feet.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I guess I understand that thinking about my own situation here with my, having to redo my own septic. Uh, it's up on, you know, it's, I know it's 20 feet above the wetlands behind me, so. Uh, so I, I guess, are you recommending that we can go down to something smaller for the, the three foot separation area?
Barry, this is Jason. I, I mean, I think what Shane was saying, it's really kind of our call on what are, what do we want it to look like? And I kind of agree with you. I, I don't know that I'm ready to get on to like 10 or 11,000 square feet, but I kind of like that 15,000 square feet number that you took, that you kicked out. And I would propose going to two feet from three feet. And then I guess I would also propose that we let the geoengineer determine what kind of equipment he wants. I mean, we, I don't know that we need to be prescriptive on a piezometer. I mean, I think there's a couple of different tools that they could probably use. And basically, it's on them to, uh, sign off on it, on whatever equipment they use.
I, I would be fine with that. Yeah, the, the two feet sounds fine. Uh, he mentioned the accessory buildings, and I guess the same thing, to make sure that they're at least um, you know, whether we have one foot or two foot above 100 year flood elevation, I guess, to make sure that they're not too close to wetlands either.
Commissioner Perro. And yes, I, I would be right along those lines too. I don't think we have to go cutting the 23,000 in half, but somewhere in the middle is fine. Um, as far as the instruments that is used, I don't know if something ever is going to come up that's better. So I don't know why we have to strictly restrict it to one thing.
Agreed.
Mr. Chair, if I could just address to that, um, so, so I guess one concern that I have is according to this poll revision, I'd be the one uh, responsible for reviewing this data. And I would need some kind of guidance on what data is acceptable. Uh, piesometer is, piesometer data or something or a tool that we use in other communities, and it has seemed to work well. Um, but I'm gonna receive questions. If we dig a hole and monitor, monitor it for a day, is that acceptable? If we dig a hole and monitor it for two days, is that acceptable? And I'm fine with whatever the, the city determines. At the end of the day, this section is trying to prevent risks. We have a couple of situations uh, that I think houses that were probably built too low in the past. And Liz and I have been out to those two houses on multiple occasions, talked about their wet basements. Uh, this, actually the code is trying to prevent that. And it, it maybe doesn't have to be code language. I would just have to have some kind of guidelines in which the city would want me to review again.
But Shane, if it's below what we recommend from a separation, doesn't a geo engineer have to sign off on it? Similar to a structural engineer signing off on trusses and?
Um, if we, I mean,
so, because I look at it as if a, if a structural engineer is called in to assess a roof modification, your assessment is it's got the right stamp on it from a structural engineer. I'm assuming it's the same with that geoengineer. If it's less than what our recommendations are, we're gonna turn it over to a geo, geological engineer or whatever his title is and say, you're responsible and you're signing off on that. And if you have that paperwork, whatever tools he uses, that would be, you're okay to go, right? Or am I missing it?
Um, yeah, I guess, I just, I guess I don't even know how it works. I mean, that's, that's certainly one approach. We won't always just simply accept other recommendations. So normally there's some kind of, uh, you know, check on the city side.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, to me, if it's a, an industry, uh, standard, we, we could leave it in.
Mr. Chair, we could even, you know, have some language, a piesometer, monitor for 30 to 60 days, or some other acceptable method. Um, I, I don't want to restrict it to just this method. This method seems to be the most cost-effective way to accurately determine it. And my concern is what, without monitoring it for at least a, a set period of time, due to cost constraints, those, those monitoring periods are becoming increasingly short. And we'll start to see a signed letter with all kinds of wiggle language in it, removing the liability from the technical engineer.
So Shane, would you be okay on leaving the piesometer in there or equivalent method?
Sure, that'd be fine.
Barry, are you good at that?
Yes.
That's acceptable to me, Commissioner Perro.
So, what I'm hearing is, what I'm hearing is we could, we could reduce the square footage to 15,000 with two feet of separation. We leave the piezometer language in there or, or other approved method? And then, uh, um, the question around the pole barn, Barry, what you're getting on, where you were pulling online is, I think Shane talked about they need to be above a hundred year floodplain, but we don't necessarily have a hard language in there about how much feet of separation a pole barn would be from a property.
Mr. Chair, uh, the pole barn is considered a structure. And we do have free boards from 100, from 100 year high water levels to a structure in other sections of our city code. So that, this portion of our city code is just what's talking about what makes a lot buildable.
Wow, we're really getting, uh,
Is everybody else hearing that hum, that static?
Yes.
Yeah.
We're gonna blame Barry, Barry.
Eric quit.
We don't want him to leave though, so.
We can't have, we can't have to leave Barry.
I'm still here.
Okay, so while we're on it, should we just glance at the rest of that ordinance, 2020-03?
Uh, Liz Stockman, this is Commissioner Perro. I did breeze through it. Everything was as we kind of just spoke of last meeting. I don't know if anybody else has any changes or anything, but everything looked good to me. Aside from this one section that we needed to discuss.
So, perfect, thanks Kelly. Do we need to review, so we cut the requirements somewhat for the house size, uh, buildable land on the three foot of separation? What is the current proposed for the, for the, the yard, if you will? Is that?
One acre contiguous. One acre contiguous area with one foot of separation. So then they can go down to 15,000 with three foot of separation.
Two foot.
The septic. Oh yeah, two foot, sorry.
So 15,000 with two foot is the house structure? And then the next level is, it has to be one acre?
One acre contiguous. Yeah, with no wetlands. For your yard area.
On a two acre lot, is that a lot to ask or not?
I, I still think we want that to be our minimum, whether it's for two acres or not.
I see Kelly shaking her head, yes.
Yes, Commissioner Perro here. I was just gonna say, I think that should be our minimum too, just because we're gonna have wetland, we need to two up in places, and this is the best way we can do it.
Okay, so I'm hearing we reduce the house footprint to 15,000 square foot with a two acre separation and then have a one acre contiguous with one foot of separation, is that right? Okay.
The only thing I think you misspoke, and you said two acre separation, I think you mean two foot of separation?
Two foot, sorry, my bad, it's 951, getting a little punchy. So Liz, can you just quickly go over the changes from last time to this time? You're on mute, we can't hear you.
I think she's not on mute, but we still can't hear.
Um, can you hear me now?
Yep, there you go.
Back to the phone. Oh my gosh. Um, so I think what Jason just summarized regarding buildability is the only change since last month. So this, the only other thing this ordinance addresses is, um, we made that correction regarding uh, street width and call the sack sizes. And then I added those graphics for the driveway requirements for the previous ordinance that we adopted, requiring the private drives, you know, that are longer than 250 feet to have that turnaround for fire access. So just added those graphics in. And that is, that's it for this ordinance. So if someone wants to make a motion for 2020-03 uh, with the 15,000 square foot of land area, two foot of separation and one acre contiguous area that cannot include wetlands, uh, we'd be good to go here.
So, hate to like draw this out five more minutes, but can we, from the last, at the last meeting, we made, had several updates to the ordinance? Can you just highlight those again, Liz, for me? I don't have the paper in front of me, my phone won't pull it up. Because we talked about.
Well, there's two ordinances. So this one is the buildability that we talked about.
So we approved everything last time? And then we just have to approve that, so that, everything we talked about last month was approved, so the last piece of it is approving this final ordinance? Is that correct?
Well, there's another, there's 2020-01, which I amended, which is the lot width.
Yep.
And all those other things.
That I can go through next.
Yeah, because when we vote on this, we're voting on those amendments as well, correct?
No, this is separate. If you vote on 2020-03, you're only voting on this buildability. Um.
Gotcha. I'm, I'm up to speed now.
Okay. Everybody good for a vote? The only other change made to 2020-03 was regarding the piesometer language and just saying or equivalent method for determining highest anticipated groundwater elevation.
So I'll make a motion to approve 2020-03 with the verbiage we discussed tonight, which includes uh, a 15,000 square foot buildability with two foot of separation with a contiguous one acre with one foot of separation. And then the verbiage around, um, the piezometer or equivalent.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Commissioner, all this made this motion. Does somebody like to second this? I'll second it. I'll open it for discussion, any discussion? CNN will call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Kelly looks like she stepped away for a second.
So Barry voted aye. Dale and Jason are in, we're just waiting for Kelly.
Yep. We're waiting, we're waiting for you to vote Kelly, we made the motion.
I know. I, I accept the motions, yes. Sorry. Single mom in it right now here.
Okay, aye, aye opposed? There's none opposed, so the motion carries.
All in favor.
All in favor?
Yep.
Aye?
Aye, yeah.
Okay. Didn't catch what Barry said.
Yeah, Barry was a yes.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carried, we'll be going to city council then.
I'll take care of the next one if someone will let me. This is Commissioner Perro.
Okay.
I would like to, uh, remove uh, December's meeting from the agenda.
Do we?
And make a motion to remove it.
Commissioner Perro made the motion. Do we have a second to this motion?
Hold on, we have another ordinance to talk about here.
Oh, we do?
We have ordinance 2020-01. And I'm gonna go through that because these are some of the changes we made last month. And the last, okay, so 2020-01 was addressing the RRT district. And the changes we made to accommodate that district. Um, so the only changes from last month involve the um, the 175 feet of lot width. So for the RRT only, we went down from 300 to 175. Um, all lots shall have a minimum lot depth of 300 feet as measured uh, the mean horizontal distance between the front lot line and the rear lot line. So if you have an angled rear lot line, you just take the average. So we still have the 300 foot minimum depth. It can always be deeper than that. And most likely will be, have to be with them, the changed lot width. Uh, but if they should happen to have a wider lot, then, you know, then we still have that 300 depth. Um, and so then we changed the building, the front building setback to 90 feet instead of 120 for the RRT district. a hundred and twenty for the RRT district. Um, now this was the part we need to chat about on page six, is regarding the driveways. Uh, remember we chatted about whether they were gravel or paved? So, the way I've written it now is saying that the primary driveway, which serves an attached garage, and all parking areas that are in the front and side yards are paved. But that a driveway access to an accessory building in the rear yard, uh, which serves as a connection, whoops. Yeah, so the, um, a driveway access to an accessory building in the rear yard, which serves as a connection of the paved driveway in the front or side yards, may be constructed of gravel from the rear line of the house to the accessory structure. Or if the driveway is completely separate from that front paved part, um, and I just threw this number out there, a driveway that is separated by forty or more feet may be gravel in its entirety. So if it's sharing the front driveway, and then you just drive off of it onto the gravel, it starts at the back of your house. If it's a separate driveway more than forty feet away from paved area, it can be gravel, that's, I was struggling with, you know, kinda thinking in my head about this visually, um, and what would make sense for the gravel part, the separate driveway. Uh, so you have any thoughts on that?
I mean, based on our discussion last week, I, I don't know that I wanna be super prescriptive, I mean, if we, we talked about, if it's a second driveway, it can be gravel. I mean, I'm just trying to realistically think, if it's alongside of the house up to the pro, I mean, I don't know that I care if it's forty feet, or if it's a second driveway, it can be gravel, if it's going to an ulterior building, if it's the primary driveway going up to the house, we agree that it should be paved.
What I, well, what I'd like to do is try to encourage people to use that paved driveway to get back to their rear yard, especially if they have, next to their garage paved anyway. You know, what if, if, cuz some people, I don't know, I guess maybe it doesn't matter, but to me, why would you have a, if it's across the other side of the yard, I totally get it. But if it's close to the paved driveway, I'm trying to think of a way to encourage them to use that instead of a separate one, but, um-
Commissioner Piro here, I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, wasn't it that we discussed that there was only, uh, a second driveway allowed on road frontage of three hundred feet or wider?
Mm-mm.
A certain sized lot?
No, we currently allow a second driveway for a hundred and twenty-five feet or more. We changed it a few years back. So people can have second driveways now, provided they have more than a hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage.
It wasn't capped at a, uh, size of a lot either? I thought that was covered too.
Hmm. No, you mean to, the lot width, regarding lot width?
No, actually, we, the lot size. Thought that that was, was an issue too, if the lot wasn't, uh, two and a half acres or more, you weren't, we weren't allowing a second driveway.
Nope, that was only, that only relates to how much street frontage you have. It's all based on street frontage. If you have a real narrow frontage, less than a hundred and twenty-five feet, you cannot have a second driveway except by, through a conditional use permit. If you have enough street frontage, then you can have two. In the lot. It's not really necessarily tied to the number of accessory buildings, if that's what you're thinking.
I don't know, I'm just thinking, if you're trying to back in a boat trailer or something, cuz you have a secondary barn and we don't want boats, uh, I'd rather have the, I'd rather have a gravel driveway than a boat lane in the front yard. And backing a boat around the side of a house is more difficult than just backing it straight up from the road.
Okay, so the proximity of the two driveways doesn't matter to you then?
I mean, I'm only one vote, but that's my opinion.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, my thought is if there's a second driveway, they're not gonna have it. Fifteen feet, they're gonna take one, that wasn't the thing.
That's, that's what my thought too is, Barry, I'm thinking if they got a second driveway, it's gonna be a ways away from their house.
So as long, usually that's the case, if they can't get it around the one side, they'll put it, you know, on the other.
Yeah.
But, um, yeah, so that would have to meet, the second driveway also has to meet that fifteen foot setback. Um, yeah, and you know, there's a handful of people too, that are gonna go ahead and pave it anyway, or part of it at least.
Right.
So I'm, yeah, I'm fine with whatever you decide or recommend.
I would leave-
I don't think it has to be too complicated.
Okay.
I agree, I think we just said the second driveway can be gravel. A primary driveway, primary driveway has to be asphalt, or asphalt or equivalent.
But if it does come off of the back of that paved part, then I think it should start at the back of the house, don't you?
Yeah, I think what we agreed to last time is the asphalt or concrete should come up to the garage, and if they have a, if they have a driveway around the house from the garage, it's gotta be paved up to the garage, or concrete up to the garage, and it's gravel from there, correct? I think that's, that's what we discussed anyway.
Okay, so, but if you're, so if you have cars parked next to your garage, let's say not on the driveway, but next to your garage, cuz it'll happen, do you want them on gravel, on grass, or pavement? So I'm trying to think of the view from the street, if the pavement goes to the back of the, just to the back end of the garage, not the, you know, it's just a, you can basically create a parking stall next to your garage that's paved or, or gravel, rather than parking on the grass, I don't know. If it, if you wanna, you know, it, cuz what's gonna happen if you have the, if you have the driveway paved, and then somebody wants to why off the gravel, you know, it's just not gonna be super well defined, is all, that's the problem with the gravel. If, if you go at least to the rear side of that garage, you're not gonna see that as much from the road. And you, you know, you're closer to the road here than you would be in a different district. Just throwing it out there from seeing a lot of code enforcement issues in other cities and-
Barry, what do you think?
I think a lot of people do tend to put this gravel parking spot next to their garage, is a pretty common thing, I guess that's the question, do we wanna allow that door, say they have to pave to the back light of the garage?
Yeah, it is pretty common for a boat, or a utility trailer, or whatever.
I guess I'm okay with paving up to the garage, and it can be gravel alongside the garage.
I don't have a problem with that either, up to this part of the garage being paved.
Okay, so anything behind the front of the house can be gravel then? Or a sep, completely separate driveway?
Correct.
Okay.
Dale, you okay with that?
I'm okay with that, it sounds good.
Perfect, Kelly, I seen you nod your head.
Okay, the only other thing then in this or, oh, sorry, Kelly, do you wanna respond?
No, I don't need to respond, I, I give it an okay.
Okay, great. Then the last thing associated with this ordinance is this metal, um, this is what the memo was talking about, um, relative to pole style construction. I had a conversation with the building official, and pole barn, pole style buildings really aren't regulated directly in the building code. Um, it's basically becomes, if someone wants to do a pole style home with an attached, um, garage, some, um, uh, usually men, you know, like these giant garages, um, but what limits that the most in our community is the requirement that the garage, attached garage cannot exceed one hundred percent of the floor area of that, the first floor of the home. So in that sense, that's helpful to us in regulating the pole style construction. It pushes people into doing an accessory pole barn rather than a pole barn house. Um, if they, they can do a pole barn style house, it'll be typical, more typical, like a slab on grade, which has, um, increased insulation requirements under and around it. Um, it doesn't necessarily end up being cheaper than, uh, a standard construction. And you can put any kind of siding on the pole style ho, home. Um, you know, it may meet energy code insulation requirements differently than traditional construction. Anyway, it can be done, so the question is, um, we currently allow steel siding or aluminum, but this clause on page one of this memo says, it limits, um, residential structures to have horizontal and overlapping siding, no wi, wider than twelve inches. Sheet metal siding shall not be permitted. Um, and it says all siding to be utilized must give an appearance similar to conventional single-family housing. So I wanna be sure, this is still something you want in your ordinance. There's a lot of, you know, new products, uh, hence some of the pictures that I included, that, um, are like board and batten look. You can even have shake metal siding that, uh, looks like shakes, looks like, you know, horizontal lap siding. There's hundreds of different products now that are made of metal, that may not all be horizontal looking. So I just want you to clarify, you know, if you're open to vertical board and batten look with metal, you know, it still doesn't, you still don't have to allow a sheet metal, um, but these other products that are, you know, made for residential applications.
Well, can, can we put in there architectural steel, cuz that's the big difference between architectural and sheet metal, right? And if you put in its architectural steel grade, um, it could be vertical, it could be horizontal. But that's gonna throw out, that's gonna throw out pole barn steel, correct?
I believe so, and also saying, you know, like hidden fasteners or-
Yep, I think if we put in there its architectural grade, arch, architectural grade steel with hidden fasteners, that's gonna throw out pole barn steel.
Right. Yeah, and not sheet metal, not, um, yeah, sheet.
Yep, and if you put architectural, if you put in architectural steel with hidden fasteners, Liz, I think that's gonna address the concern of, um, somebody's gonna put together a sheet steel building with, uh, pole barn screws.
Okay. How does that sound to everybody else?
I think, I think it clearifies it.
That covers that question and leaves some availability for some new product.
Just side of things.
Okay. So, yeah, residential structures are very open-ended as far as, you know, they can have grade A through grade E, vinyl is the lowest quality. The grade D, which is steel and aluminum, um, is currently allowed, so we're good there. Um, okay, well, I think that answers the question, so going back to page seven of the actual ordinance change, 2020-01, it was the highlighted yellow part, um, under E, so I'll amend that section. And then we would have all the questions answered for this ordinance. So I would entertain a motion if, if you're ready.
Well, we're ready, but it's, I'm not sure of all the things we've added to it.
You want me to summarize, or?
Yes, summarize it then.
I'll make a motion.
You wanna, Kelly, okay.
Yeah, this is just for 2020-01, correct, not the 03, cuz we already made a motion on that one.
Right.
Okay, so this is, this is in regards to the sheet metal, um, and the siding materials and the driveway.
Right.
So, yeah, I, I'll make a motion to change the, um, written information, uh, on surfacing, and the, what do you call it, siding, I guess?
Allowing structural steel with hidden fasteners?
Yeah, and to allow, yes, to allow the structural steel with, or architectural steel with hidden fasteners. I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Liz, Liz, do we need to include lot size minimum as a hundred and seventy-five feet, and minimum depth of three hundred feet, and setback is at ninety feet?
That's already in here.
Okay, perfect.
That's good, yes, um-
Okay, Commissioner Piro made the motion, does somebody like to make the second?
I'll second it.
Well, Commissioner Aldous seconded it, we'll have it up for discussion, any further discussion? See you then, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Piro says aye.
Aye.
Did we get all four?
Dale, did you vote?
Yes, I voted.
Okay.
Okay, okay, opposed, all opposed, motion carries then. Okay, we're open for the motion, Kelly started on a little while ago.
I would like to make a motion to cancel the December twenty-second meeting.
Do we have a second this motion?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Piro or, uh, I don't know, Commissioner Aldous seconded it, we have any discussion? See you then, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I'm not gonna be there, so.
So, uh, I'll call for the vote, everybody voted, did we all vote on that?
Yes.
We voted on that.
I'm getting, okay, we voted on that, okay, I, that should just about end the meeting then.
Your last, Barry, is this your last meeting?
Yes, it is, I moved to adjourn.
Hey, appreciate your help.
You bet.
Yeah, we're gonna miss you.
Yeah, it's been a heck of a thirteen years, it's been, uh, uh, a rewarding experience, a good, good time, so, I've enjoyed it.
I second the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay, easy to answer.
All right, take care everyone.
See you guys. Thanks Barry, bye.
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 Bye, goodnight, thanks for hanging in there, everybody.